Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting, the Oklahoma City Planning Commission, for January 24th, 2019. If you have a cellphone with you, now is a great time to turn it off. I'm doing the same thing. And for those of you who are with us, maybe, you know, not regulars, let me explain a little bit about how this works. We will do a little bit of housekeeping here at the beginning with some things that need to be continued in minutes and that kind of stuff. And then as we get to the items that will be heard today individually, we'll call each of the applicants to the front. They'll give us their name and address. They'll tell us what it is they're here asking for. We may or may not have some questions of them. If there are others who wish to be heard on that item, we'll ask them to do the same thing, come forward, name and address, give us their comments. We may or may not have questions for them. At that point, we may discuss amongst ourselves. And then we'll call each item for a vote in turn. Let's start. The first item on the agenda is, of course, the receipt of the minutes from the January 10th, 2019, meeting.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to receive the minutes of the January 10th, 2019, meeting. Would you cast your votes, please? They are received. That's not quite right. Thank you. They are received. Items to be continued.
I have three uncontested requests for continuance today. The first is item 12, PUD 1700. The applicant requests this item be deferred to February 14th. And item 13 and 14, PUD 1704, and C 7041, have been withdrawn.
Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the continuance and withdrawal request as read for items 12, 13, and 14.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item 12 and withdraw items 13 and 14. Would you cast your votes, please? It's done.
I have one new request for continuance. That's item B 11. That's V 18, defer to February 14th.
Is there anybody here who thought they wanted to be heard on that item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to continue item number 11 to February 14th. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item number 11. Would you cast your votes, please? It is continued. We have a group of items at the beginning of the agenda that are consent items. These are items that are fairly routine, for which we've received no protest or negative input, that are fairly administrative in their approval. Not exactly, but pretty close. So we vote on them as a block. Would you read those for us, please?
Yeah, those items are 1 through 4. CE 985, application to close in easement at 10708 and 10709, Northwest 20th Street. Item 2, PC 10559, to rezone 2232, South Missouri, to the I-2 district. Item 3, PC 10561, application to rezone 1949, Southeast 44th, to the I-2 district. And item 4, CE 981, to close a portion of an alley at 6th and Oklahoma.
Is there anybody present who thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the consent target.
I have a motion, a second, to approve items 1 through 4. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved. So items to be heard separately.
First item for public hearing is item number 5. That's CE 984, application by Bob Mackey, close the south 950 feet of Gilson Way, extending south from 29th Street, east of Council Road.
The applicant present?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Gary Nolan with Smith Roberts Baldish-Wiler, representing the applicant, 100 Northeast 5th Street.
I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
Gary Nolan.
Nolan. Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Tell us what it is you're asking us for today.
We're asking to close the south 950 feet of Gilson Way, on the south side of Southwest 29th Street. It's east of Council Road.
Is it my understanding that this is entirely surrounded by your property? It serves no other property but yours?
Yes, ma'am. It's hobby lobby property. And they are in agreement with the two CE's.
Do we have any questions with Mr. Nolan? Is there anyone else present who wished to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I want to approve item number 5.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 5. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 6, PC 10560, application by William Higginbottom, to rezone 705, Southeast 79th Street, to the I-1 light industrial district.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Terry Stevens, trustee of the William Higginbottom Trust. And my address is Post Office Box 94370, Oklahoma City, 73143.
Thank you. What is it we're doing for you today?
We're asking to rezone 705, Southeast 79th Street, from a R1 status to an I-1 light industrial district.
There is a reference in the staff report to the fact that there's a stream corridor which bisects the site. You understand that at some point, that's going to have to be dealt with through the engineering department and figured out?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Is there anybody here today that wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
This area is, it may have one day been appropriate to be residential, and there's some there, but I don't see it expanding any farther at this time. Mostly industrial in the area. That said, I move to approve the application for PC 10560.
There's not any indication that there's residential development occurring currently in this area?
No, there just has, there is residential there, just has been there for a long time.
Once upon a time. I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 6. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 7 is SP 514, a special permit by Travis Keating for recycling operation located at 6220, Southwest 44th Street.
My name is Rob Elliott with Elliott Architects at 900 Northwest 6th Street, with Travis Keating today. We helped Travis with the permitting process for the improvements on the property that needed to be made, so we can answer any of your questions that deal with the permitting process. And Travis can certainly give you any information that you may need on the business cycle. We're hoping to receive a special permit to allow the recycling business at this site.
Have you been in touch with Jim Ellison, who sent us a letter of protest on the special permit? His concerns seem to be mostly about traffic and circulation and that sort of thing.
We did receive the protest from the city, and Travis has made attempt to contact him. He'll speak to that. I'm thinking that his protest had more to do with the parking and the screening of the property, and part of the permit review and in the permit plans were providing new drive and parking and landscaping on the property. So hopefully, that will be resolved with that. But Travis can speak more to the contact he's tried to have with the protest.
So you have not been able to actually reach him, make contact?
No, ma'am, I have not. I've written him, and I've actually tried to get ahold of the company that he's with to get ahold of him. And I guess he was the vice president if I had.
That's what it says. Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Travis Keating. Address would be 6300, Southwest 44th Street, in Oklahoma City.
So I made contact with Rob Travis on the ESAs, specifically the vulnerable aquifer thing. And the one problem I have, and I'm going to look at JJ a little bit here, is that on these, on the ESAs and particularly the vulnerable aquifer question, we don't, I guess, provide much guidance to applicants on approaches that they might take. And I know generally, we don't provide much guidance on development at all. We don't necessarily provide much guidance on how to build a building. But I know, exactly. And so, and so part of me, part of me, whenever we say, "We need to do better at, you know, when we've got a vulnerable aquifer, we need to do better at low-impact development that might help recharge the aquifer," to some degree, I feel like I need to say, "Well, that's a ball in your court." But at the same time, we're kind of at a point in history where we're so dumb at knowing how to approach it, that maybe we do need to provide a little bit of guidance. Because we've just never had to think about these things. So I'm kind of at a crossroads where, you know, every time I mention to people that we need to, because I agree with these things, that we need to do this, but whenever I tell applicants to do it, they look at me and they say, "I don't know, what, tell me what to do."
And we'll get with plan, that really comes from policies in the comprehensive plan, and we can look at that. I'll talk to planning. In this case in particular, though, you're looking at a property that's already developed. But if we're looking at a bare ground, it's a little different.
Well, I know that you guys are making some improvements, right? I mean, you're doing, like you said, some parking lot improvements.
Yes.
So I think there's some opportunity, maybe, to do some pervious paving or something. Did you make any headway with the link I sent you?
I read all of them. I looked at all the links. I read the response from the sustainable staff. I have not tried to contact the staff yet. I looked at that. I looked more in terms of what low-impact development opportunities we may have. Certainly, you know, on the same page in terms of concept and theory for us. Our toilet's about 80 square feet, and we're building parking for six cars, I think. We're doing some landscaping. You know, had I been thinking ahead, I probably would have asked to do gravel at a hearing like this, or maybe that still had to be a board of adjustment. So gravel would be better, but gravel's not legal until you get a variance. So that's something that we could do. That would be another step to try and do some, something besides hard surface paving.
Well, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to hold up this application today on this. It's something that I think we need to figure out how to come up with.
As you might be aware, I went to the Oklahoma City Planning and printed where the aquifer is. And astounding to me that it's all over Oklahoma City.
Oh, yeah. That's why this comes up all the time. I don't want to.
And our code doesn't allow any kind of, I mean, pervious paving whatsoever, right? Not without a variance.
Well, we adopted some recommendations.
There's certain heavy industrial uses that have, like, outdoor storage yards for equipment and machinery that will allow gravel for overflow. They'd have to meet your parking requirement, but if you have a storage yard, you can have gravel. But that's only for certain heavy industrial.
So at the present time, only through a spud or by variance, we cannot make that a condition of the special permit, the way we're operating currently?
Anyway, just wanted to have the conversation.
All right. I think that's great. The staff report notes that there is a stream and associated flood plain to the west of your site. Which way do you drain?
I would think that we'd have to drain to the west.
So you're aware that that's something you'll have to deal with as you move forward, if there are issues with respect to drainage?
Yes, ma'am. I think Travis has had previous conversation with the city store water quality.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The Kara Cook, she came and she looked at everything. She watched our water drain off. She noticed that it goes right into 44th Street, and it does run into that. She, it's really good that you guys are making us pave, because that was one of her recommendations, was to pave out to a certain area. Because the way our property is, it kind of dips in. So over here, and towards the west, it dips. It doesn't run out, but it does run out this direction. So it actually holds water in a little bit in one area. So she gave us really good reviews on the way it runs, and she did ask us if we could pave as soon as possible. So, and what you're asking us to do is exactly what she was asking for, so. And like I discussed in our communication, we're willing to do whatever's necessary whenever it comes to taking care of the environment and taking care of this area. So I mean, we're more, probably not aware of everything that may need to be done, but we're more aware, but we definitely want to take care of that.
Okay.
Is this a full-blown recycling with car crusher and nothing like that?
No, sir. What this is, is this is going to be installation that's going to be a hub to bring in processed material. We are actually, as this is approved and everything goes on, this right here is going to be a hub for Enid, Elk City, Falls Valley, Purcell, and out there is where they're going to process. That's where they do their cars and everything. Everything that comes to our hub is actually going to be boxed, bailed, ready to go, out of a semi, into a warehouse. We're going to stock up so that we can have pure raw material to be able to ship directly to the mills. Whenever they ask us if we were going to have outdoor storage, and that's kind of what, how this right here came about, there may be some outdoor storage, of course, so we can't say no. And that would be like a bale of material sitting on concrete right here, which we already have the concrete slab set up to be able to set that on, just like other places do. But there's not going to be car crushing, there's not going to be compressor breakdown, there's not going to be electric motors tore up all over the place. We're not going to have mounds of stuff. We are not interested in the public. We are not interested in having big track hoes where we grab stuff while people trailer it and throw it around. We actually want everything to be able to come to us from other yards, so that we can actually just ship it to the mills straight from warehouses.
Thank you.
Well, that prompts me, I guess, to ask, is this special permit actually tailored in that way? So if, God forbid, you go out of business and somebody else comes along and uses the site as a processing facility, would they be permitted to do any of those things that these guys are not going to do?
It's, it's not tied down that tight. It's tied down to the, to the site plan. If he wanted to, or the commission felt that maybe he wanted to limit areas about where outdoor activity could take place, we could do that. If he has a specific area on the site where he would limit outdoor storage and activity.
Does the permit itself necessarily prevent or prohibit car crushing?
It could, if that's, yes, it could.
But does it currently?
I'd have to read his program description. He was, he's also tied to the description of his special permit that they submitted.
Do you know, Mr. Elliott?
Well, I think that we answered the question, if I can find it.
Of course. I do. I have it here somewhere.
As far as program description, I think this is our, as far as the description we made, and I think this may be patterned also on what the use in the code may have been. But our response was Hope Metals Recycling is a business primarily engaged in the storage, sale, dismantling, or processing of used waste materials that are not intended for reuse in their original form. The operation includes industrial services for land cleanup of ferrous and non-ferrous metals, freon recovery onsite or at remote locations, and small and large equipment salvage. The business will maintain operations within indoor enclosed facility and outdoor secure yard. Hope Metals also accepts equipment scrap metal donations in order to donate proceeds to nonprofit organizations. So, does that answer the question?
If you felt it necessary, you could prohibit car crushing, you could limit stockpiles of metal to a certain location on the site, any other conditions that the applicant would agree to.
This is, is this where we want these uses? An I-3 industrial, already set up, existing zoning around it? I mean, I'm not, I, look, I mean, it just seems to me that there's nothing about this application that is inappropriate for this particular zoning in this particular area.
I didn't mean to suggest it is. I just want us to be sure that we know what we're voting on.
Understood. Okay. I just want to make, because I don't know where else we'd put this. And it already exists, so.
So does that satisfy your concerns or questions?
I'd think of the metal recycling place at 51st and High, and I-35. And from I-35, it's a terrible eyesore, but from High Avenue, at any given point in time of the day, you have 40 people lined up going north and south, waiting on their turn to turn in, and then when they empty out, they're parked on the side. I mean, 44th Street, I don't think can handle that, because it's much more highly traveled. The people that are on High, that's what they're there for, is that redlement recycling place, not impeding traffic. So that's what I was trying to make sure of, is that that wasn't going to be the case. Okay.
That is, that is in lieu of all the public traffic that they take in. That's why you have 40 cars trying to sell five pounds of copper or something. That's not what we're interested in.
Okay. And does that satisfy going forward, if they were to leave, can?
And that's, that's the thing. I think that it would have to be specified what, that it's not open to the public, or that it's not, I mean, if that's what your concern is specifically, I think it would have to be addressed specifically. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it is right now, it's just limited to metal recycling.
My curiosity question on a similar subject is relating to the way your site plan shows, the loading dock. Do you know, Mr. Elliott, has there ever been a variance obtained to operate and maneuver in the street right of way here? Do you know? Because it would be impossible to use this loading dock without maneuvering in the street right of way.
Yeah. If you look at the site plan, the building marks 6220, the loading ramp, which there's a picture of it that was provided, actually by, I believe, Mr. Ellison provided these photographs, but there's a semi truck shown in the loading ramp.
I was just curious, because, I mean, I think Commissioner Hinkle's making a decent point just with the maneuvering. If you look at that semi truck, it had to have used the street right of way to maneuver into the loading ramp.
Yes, sir. I understand your question better. That, from the photographs, that facility, that loading dock is not part of the recycling center. I think if you're looking, that one's quite along 44th Street, isn't it? Yeah, 6220, is it different?
Okay, so you, that's not part of yours?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's different. So this is, yours is just 6300?
Correct.
Okay. I took this to mean this were both your operations. It was just 6300 we were dealing with.
No, sir. That's ran by the Neets Foundation.
Okay.
So, Mr. Elliott, is there a way that we can address this issue? I mean, our, is it possible for you to limit the special permit to indicate that it's not open to the public? And would that resolve the issue? I mean, is there a way that we can address the concern that he has about traffic lining up on the street that you're comfortable with in terms of your business model?
Well, I would, I'm not sure. And maybe the rental could help us some. It's our intention to have a gate with a lock, with a guard. I don't, we've never talked about that. I think what Travis has explained is his business model does not cater to the public receipt or sale of goods.
And so my question is, would you be comfortable with limiting the special permit to not be open to the public?
What would that mean, the public, for the public?
I mean, I'm not married to that wording, but I'm, but, I mean, if we can find a way to say that, that's both legal and, you know, enforceable and all that stuff. But, I mean, is that something that you'd be comfortable with?
I think that's the business model. I don't really say that.
I'm asking you, is that something you'd be comfortable?
So are you considering the public to be, like, say, First Baptist Church, whenever they do their can drive, and they bring in their cans to us, and we give them a really good price, so that they can give money to be able to support campers to be able to go to camp? Or are we saying, public, just as in a guy, like I said, coming in with, probably not politically correct, but, you know, just a drug addict coming in, trying to sell all of his materials, so he can do whatever, which ends up happening in scrap yards all the time? Are we talking about, I mean, however you want to define it? I mean, we do accept.
That's what I, yeah. How do you want to define that? That is the big question.
So in the special permit, I'm not, like, we're not interested in having a bunch of public people come in. Actually, it's illegal to buy copper over five pounds from anybody whatsoever. It's illegal to buy one pound of AC from anybody without a HVAC or anything like that license, federal sales exempt tax license or anything like. So we're not interested in those people. Now, we will have, say, Evans, which they, they may come in with their duly.
Can you stop right there for just a second? Is the special permit limited to his business? Does it run with the land?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so we may have Evans, which is a company down here on Eastern, that comes in with a duly flatbed truck, and they may have, you know, 4,000 pounds of copper and two boxes setting in, and they'll pull in and what have you. But we, and all the other businesses that we, that we do anything with, we're always scheduled. You can't just surprise us.
Yeah. Let me, let me ask another question. How big a hurry are you in? Can we take two weeks and figure this out? Or are you under the gun?
Well, we're kind of under the gun financially, just because we're doing some things. But I could, I could basically say that we won't take.
Why would we want to, why would we want to continue this? I mean, I get it, but.
For the reasons that Commissioner Hinkle has raised with respect to the street and whether, you know, it will serve as a staging area for traffic to the location and so forth, seems to me a valid concern if there's a way to address it. I'm not, I'm not saying that I have a problem with the use that he's wanting to make of the property at all, but if it's possible to tailor the special permit to the use that he's wanting to make of the property in a way that will satisfy Commissioner Hinkle's concerns, I think that's worth exploring.
But that was why I asked about the, that's why I asked about the variance, because if they don't have a variance to operate in the street right of way, then if they're queuing into the street right of way, they got a problem regardless of the special permit. Is that, that's correct, right?
Right.
Yeah, so they can't do that anyway. That's why I asked. If there hasn't been a variance, he could be doing it legally within the variance, and now he needs a special permit, so then we would take some steps. But without that, if they're out there queuing in the street right of way, the special permit doesn't protect them to allow them to do that.
To answer Janice's question about the special permit running with the land, it does, but they do expire if the use ceases for 12 months. So if he moves out.
Yeah. That's good.
With what Commissioner Craven said, I'm comfortable with, because if they can't stage it out in the street, then they're going to be in trouble if they do that anyway, and that will have to end.
So that satisfies your concern?
Yeah, I think Mr. Ellison would probably call somebody.
Is Mr. Ellison present, since you asked? Is there anybody here who wanted to be heard on this item today? No? Are we finished with this discussion? Does anybody want to make a? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move approval for case number SP 514.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
Thank you. Item eight, SP 516, application for permit for automobile sales located at 3121 North May Avenue.
My name is Joseph Hushiar. I reside at 4800 Northeast 84th Street in Norman.
Tell us what it is you're asking us for.
Yes, existing building structures is for car wash, and it's closed down, and we need to change, remodel the area for car sales.
This is in my ward. I met with Mr. Hushiar on site. The, the site does not have access onto the abutting residential street, cash-in place. The change in grade of the site itself is prohibitive of that. It's surrounded by semi-industrial uses, really, although they are zoned commercially. We talked about some things that could be done to the site to improve the look of it. He is not seeking new signage as part of this application. And we did talk a little bit about landscaping. I think Commissioner Highsmith, you had some questions about that.
Yeah, would you, would you be willing to include some new landscaping with your item?
Sure, absolutely. On the architectural perspective, we probably, most of the frontage is, they done all solid concrete along the curb line. And we said that we probably remove part of the curb area to put landscaping and put trees, kind of change. It seems that North May, all both sides, I was noticing that it's all pure concrete. And as we change these to new businesses, it's a good idea, probably, yeah, put some trees and everything, and make it pleasant. And we will do that, sure.
Okay. Cool.
And we also talked about the idea of the sort of rail fencing along the front and along the north side, so where you're about cash-in. Staff has indicated that's acceptable, but you're talking about doing site proof to the west, so between you and the business, and then also between you and your neighbor to the south.
Absolutely, yeah. There's a, there's a old, I'm not sure what the business was, but kind of depleted, and it's kind of ugly. We were on a solid wood fencing, of course, with the top rail, make it look good for ourselves. And in the front, facing the main street and then cash-in, we were on the balsters with the, these steel tendon that mainly you see on the highways and the medians, that people, truck don't, I mean, cars don't pass through there. We put something pleasant like that in order to get-
Which are common along these kinds of uses, those low rail kind of-
Yes, and most of it, yeah, most of them.
So, I'm keeping Mr. Hushiar's phone number, and, you know, if this place turns out to be a grubby little car lot, he'll be getting calls from me. But we did meet on site, we walked it, we talked about it. There are nine other similar small car lots between 23rd and 36th Street along May. Some of them look better than others. This is going to be the most beautiful one.
I think so. I really think so. I think we put some effort to it. I know that the other ones mostly just change and put the cars, whatever, but I'll try to make sure that, again, at least front, first one to start putting some trees, maybe, I don't know if the people do it by the pressure, but it's nice to get some green along the May, North May.
Let me ask if there's anybody else who wanted to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll, I think demolishing the car wash there will improve, begin the improvement process, just getting rid of that, so I'm, I'm, and it seems to be a trending use in that part of the, in that part of town, so this could maybe start a trend toward betterment. I'll move approval of the application.
Can I ask a question quickly?
Sure.
Just with it being a special permit, do we need to do anything as far as these issues, as far as the landscaping, or sidewalks, or address, are we allowed to address those things, as we are approving the special permit? Or no, we're just dealing with whether they can operate the car lot or not?
They would really all be addressed at the building permit stage.
Got it.
That's why I'm keeping Mr. Hushiar's phone number. So-
Second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number eight. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item nine is SPOD 1103, application by All City Equipment to rezone 3728 Northwest 9th Street.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Terry Irvin, P.O. Box 95131, Oklahoma City, 73143.
And what is it you're asking?
To rezone from residential to light commercial.
So, it was only 18 months ago that we rezoned this property, and at that time, we seemed to be fairly certain that we wanted this portion of the property to be residential. Have any recollection of that, Mr. Enslin? I think you're probably the only other person who was here at the time. Not leaping to mind. There are some issues with the property compatibility with the adjoining residential, and there are some suggestions in the staff report about ways that greater compatibility could be reached. Have you seen the staff report?
Yes, I have it with me.
Are you in agreement with the TEs?
There were some changes that I would like to make, not drastic, but if you would, on page three and seven, where it says existing healthy mature trees within the green belt would retain, be retained. Do you see that? Okay, those have since been removed by the owner. So, they were, some large ones, and they were kind of, they were dead, so.
Well, then, they weren't existing healthy trees.
Well, did he remove all of them, or just the dead?
I would say, I would say 70%.
Was that 70% dead or alive?
They were, they were dead, and the thing was, they were huge, and they would be hanging over what would be the building that goes in. And with them being that big, and the storms that we do have come through here, the thought was that they weren't healthy enough to withstand that, that it would cause a problem. So, that's why he removed them. Not at my request, but he did remove them.
Interesting.
Which we plan on, on addressing, all the areas that will not be paved with trees, crepe myrtles, bushes, those kinds of things that do enhance and take care of the, you know, so it's not just so commercial, that it has got some kind of appeal to go on.
Was there something else? You said there were a couple of items.
Yes, still on page three, the overt development regulations. It's stating here that consists of a three-foot tall brick, lane scot on the north and east and west elevations, and then a painted split face block building shall be permitted for the remainder of the building. What I had requested was for it to be a metal building with about a four-foot sheet metal, like it's, the building next to it, we're trying to be cohesive with it, so it looks like it's all on purpose. But it would, the front would all be metal, but with two different colors. One would be a darker on the bottom with a lighter shade on top. Do you, do you understand?
I do understand, but you're not going to get my vote on a sheet metal building.
I have pictures of the one that's next to us, that we are going on, if you would like to see that.
When was it constructed?
He just, he just finished his. And I happened to drive by and saw the land and said, hey, I would kind of like to go there.
I definitely want to see the pictures.
There you go.
Okay. I do have some. Does anybody else want to? I have plenty.
I would like to see them.
So, I will turn your attention to page 10 and 11, which is where the technical evaluations are.
This building that you just provided us a picture of?
Uh huh.
This is built along the frontage of Portland, is that correct?
No, it's on 9th Street. The front is 9th Street. It's actually one lot inside. There's an existing building on the corner of 9th and Portland. It's been there for quite some time, and this one is just the one next to-
To the west of it?
I'm sorry.
To the west of that lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the lot I'm talking about is just west of him.
Tell me again, one more time, where that building is located?
There's a new on-Q building at Northwest 10th and Portland that stretches from 10th to 9th, and this is just on the south side of that.
And it, from maybe the metal building? Jesus Christ. Okay?
So, this is right-
Yes, sir?
This is 9th Street?
Yes.
So, it is apparently the other half of the SPOD that we approved 18 months ago.
So, is it the metal?
That was when we thought there was going to be residential development on this half.
Yeah, the existing spud is this site and the site to the east, where the building is. Spud was to be developed in two tracts. One, a light industrial on the east, and the west was a residential R3 base.
This is the building that is on the east?
Correct.
Next door.
That we've already approved?
Correct.
Right.
When we thought this was going to be residential, as a buffer between-
Right, that and the residential.
Yeah.
So, for the application that we're here on, this may not, does this have any relevance?
No.
Okay.
Except that he's saying he wants his building to look like that.
Right, that's the same style and everything that we're going to be, this building right next door.
Well, how does that buffer the residential?
Not.
Just out of curiosity, I mean.
It doesn't, I think that's the point. That's the point. Let me ask you-
That and the trees are gone?
Yeah, that and the trees are gone. Can I ask you again about the technical evaluations of the bottom of 10 and the top of 11? I directed your attention to it, and then I started talking, I'm sorry. Have you read them? Do you agree with them?
The one thing that they were asking to take the west side of the building and scoot it five foot closer to the east, to make a 20-foot buffer between that and the house. I'd like to keep it at 15. We're going to be putting a fence up there, as, per request and per permitting, put a fence up there, but we're also going to be putting back trees and those kinds of things. There'll be grass along there, as well as some trees that'll be newly planted. So, I kind of like to keep the building in the, in the center, if we can. We're going to put a retaining wall on the east side of the building to help with the water runoff, and we'll be getting with Water Resources Board to help us get that all channeled out, so that we can address the aquifer and make sure that we get enough water that doesn't run off, but soaks in.
And the other TE?
I'm sorry?
And the other TE?
I guess, I'm not understanding.
Item number two, the other TE.
Oh, yeah, that one I'm fine with.
Well, I, you know, I can't support this application, but if, maybe I should ask if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? No? I mean, I, I think 18 months ago, we were pretty clear that we would approve the bit of low industrial zoning if there were something done on this half of the property to mitigate and buffer it from the residential adjoining to the west. Now, they're wanting to take that and basically replicate what's on the other piece of the property. I'm not supportive of that, so. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
I'm a little troubled by it. I'm a little troubled by it. I think the staff report, I think staff here did a good job of making the recommendation to shift the use. I mean, it's, this neighborhood, just because I've been to this on-Q a handful of times, I mean, the neighborhood is, it's not like it's in some state of deterioration in terms of the use. You drive down those streets, they're full of cars, people are there, I mean, it's an active neighborhood. And you're allowing what is truly industrial through metal buildings to further encroach in. I totally get why 18 months ago, you guys would have approved the east half, because it's directly across the street from the on-Q. That, that makes some sense. And the area surrounding it, especially to the south, as you go back down toward Reno, is, is industrial, so all that makes sense to me. But I, I'm, I can't, I don't know that I can get there here because of the encroachment in the residential, and, I mean, I think staff tried to accommodate it by suggesting that you take the setback, shift it, and then we could require you to install further landscaping, which would enhance that buffer between neighborhood, but I think you're going to lose me in a metal building in this area. I just, I don't want to contribute to that deterioration of the neighborhood personally. Those are my comments.
So, so to get there, it sounds like you're going to need to change the materiality to, to what's been requested, right? To split face block or masonry product.
So, is that, is that what it would take to make that a, to get it rezoned?
Well-
Because you're going to put the, the brick and all that on there, but we're going to have a little parking lot there. Not that there'll be many cars in it, but we will be putting grass and trees.
Well, obviously, I can't speak for the other commissioners. I'm just saying what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm only speaking up, because I, I was also going to say, that, I was going to ask if you were here to, to hear my comments on the aquifer-
Correct.
Previously, to the other applicant, okay.
Yeah, we talked on the phone, so, yeah, I know your concern.
Same comments apply here to you, obviously. But I, I kind of agree with the others. I'm, I'm always sensitive to, to how we buffer with, with residential. So, whatever we can do here, I think would be good, would be the right thing to do. So, would love to see you take that next step.
Yeah, and, you know, I look back to the south toward 8th Street, that's, those are residential. You know, as Scott rightly points out, we're now moving, there's kind of the, quote, the Mendoza line there, where it, you know, basically says you get to the, you go west of this, and you start getting into the residential, and it doesn't, it doesn't support that line. I, I don't, I don't think we ought to, we ought to do that right here. And, you know, maybe you can, you can try, but-
Under what conditions would you accept?
Well, I, I'm not going to, I can't say what I would accept, I can say what-
What you're not going to-
Look at this application and say, I can't approve it.
Okay.
But we're pretty clear when we came in last time, that we wanted to step down back to the residential. So, we had a little light industrial there, which was across from the on-Q. We, R3 zoning, which is more intense than what's right behind it, and then that steps down logically into the R1 area. So, you've got to step down there to put another steel building, and, you know, it's just not, and it's, it's a neighborhood. Nobody, I, I wouldn't want that, and the guy's already torn out the healthy mature trees, that some of them might not have been healthy, we'll, we'll just say that, but it's not, it's not the deal we made when we approved it in the first place. And I'm always willing to look at changes in conditions, as we've said, they change over time, but I don't think I can approve this. You can continue it, see what you want to talk to your client, I understand you may want to do that, but-
Right, I haven't bought it yet, that it was under contingency, if, if we could get it rezoned. So, I didn't know anything about your pass, that's the deal. So I didn't know anything about your pass, that's the deal.
Uh, well, you can-
No, I didn't.
Continue the application if you'd like, or you can get a denial, because I think that's where you're headed.
I definitely do.
Sounds okay.
I don't think you can get to five. You've got to have five to approve it, and you've got one, two-
Well, and just to prevent maybe needlessly continuing something, I'm, I don't, I almost think we ought to put it to a vote here because I'm not sure if you came back with a split-blocked building that was an I-1 use that was-
No.
You're not going to get me there.
I'm not, yeah. I don't, I don't want you to walk away thinking that it's just about it being a brick building or whatever. But moving industrial uses further into this neighborhood is a non-starter for me, so.
Well, I hate to jump into this a little bit, but my, my problem with that, I'm going to defend this a little bit now because, I mean, man, there's an On-Q just to the north of it. And, you know, we, I don't want to jump back to last meeting, but if it's about, to me, this is about materiality almost.
It's not, it's not directly to the north.
I mean, I mean, I don't see the difference necessarily.
I think this is quite a bit different. If this was, if this was a block pattern development like that On-Q is right there, where now you've completely shifted this line and you're on the corner, or if this lot were, what, affronted Portland, for example, I would feel very differently about it. It's inset into the neighborhood, and you're further eroding that line, and you're taking it west of the line that's established by the On-Q. Like I said, if you think about it 18 months ago, it makes perfect sense that they would have said, well, look, this isn't going to develop residentially at this point. So, that makes some sense. And then holding this for R3 also makes sense. To allow that to intrude further west, you are pushing that line, in my opinion, of the neighborhood. You are. Without a block pattern, you're just putting industrial further deep into that neighborhood. That's the difference to me.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but I'm going to-
So, I guess-
I mean, I think, I think you get at least the point of what I was saying, so I'm going to leave it at that.
The question for you today is, do you want to take a continuance of this case and reconsider your application, or would you like a vote?
I guess I'd like a vote because it doesn't sound like that it's going to change either way we go. I have one gentleman that's, that's not against it, but I have everybody else that's saying, saying there's no way we're going to let anything else go in there other than residential.
I, I think I could be persuaded because it sounds to me, are we going to actually develop that area as residential in any way in the first place? And it doesn't sound like it's, it's going to.
Well, there's a-
Current land that we're talking about. It sounds like we're not. So then maybe if it does have the right look, and maybe if the parking is on the east side, and maybe if, I could be persuaded by that. But I don't know if it's worth it to you because it doesn't sound like there's enough votes anyway, but-
Is it, is it a purely speculative transaction? Do you have an end user in mind?
Yeah, it would be my electrical company. It's an electrical contracting company. So there's very few, if any, cars that's there. They come there in the morning, they get their assignments, they leave, and that's it. And the only thing that's there then is-
Well, so then, then the question would become, you know, are there ways that the uses can be tailored sufficiently to persuade, you know, five people to vote for it? And if so, it might be worth you taking a couple of weeks and thinking it over, and if not, not. So, again, it's your choice.
If I was you, and I'm not, and I don't know what your economic circumstances or anything like that, I don't know if two weeks hurts you or not, but you've got two weeks to kind of think about it.
Right, I'd have to reconstruct the whole scenario. It's still going to be where I bring in equipment to put inside the building because there won't be anything outside. So I have to have at least two overhead doors in order to accommodate the company. And so with two overhead doors, if we make it look more residential, it's still a commercial happening there. Is that, is that-
I would, I would take the continuance, and I would talk to that lady.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. This is my opinion.
Settle well, designer.
She looks like she's not sure about it, but I would talk to her.
Okay.
And I think that she might have some suggestions about your approach.
All right, I'll take a continuance. I thank you very much. Anything else for me?
Hold on a minute.
I would be open to considering this if you changed the building and made it look not quite so industrial. Honestly, the deal killer for me was the metal building when you went there and then refused the buffer that was recommended by staff.
So, what I'm hearing from you, put a brick facade on the front?
No.
Makes it look nice?
No, no.
Hey, that's what I'm hearing. He said, oh, the rep.
Wait a minute. I'm going to continue this for two weeks.
We can continue now.
It's in the poll. You can call us after the meeting if you want to talk to us. You know, we're reachable. But, you know, we've got other people sitting here. We're not going to, we're not going to design your application for you from the horseshoe. That's my recommendation.
If the applicant's preference is for us to go ahead and have the up or down vote, yes or no, then I'm, I'm for that more than the continuance.
I, it's up to him. We give him his options. You've got to choose, though.
Okay, one more time.
I'll do a continuous, continuance.
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue item nine, SPUD 1103, to February 14th, second.
I have a motion second to continue item nine until February the 14th. Cast your votes, please. It's continued. Do we know where we are? Who's voting how? You don't want, you don't want the item continued? Okay. Just to be clear.
Shadid vote.
Just to be clear. It's been continued for two weeks.
All righty, thank you.
Merci on February 14th.
Sorry, yes.
Or not, as the case may be.
Next item is number 10, PUD 1707, application by Southwest Covenant Schools, rezone 11, 1060, Northwest 23rd Street.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll and Associates. I'm here with Southwest Covenant Schools to rezone a 10-acre tract, like I said, located on South Side 23rd between Sarah and Yukon Parkway. The intent is to allow a new high school facility adjacent to their existing Southwest Covenant Church and School campus. So, we've submitted a PUD application that limits the uses, provides architectural requirements, landscape buffer, setback requirements, screening, and additional limitations on second-story windows. Just a little background, Southwest Covenant Church and School has been adjacent to this location for over 35 years. They purchased this property approximately 10 years ago with the intent of building a high school, and that's what we're here for today. And we believe it'll be a great addition for the community. Staff has recommended approval for TEs, and we're in agreement with TEs two and four, which includes screening on the south and lining up the Western Drive with Kings Ridge Drive to the north. But we would ask that TE1 be deleted, and we'd like to make some modifications to TE3. Delve into this real quick. So TE1 requires a 15-foot landscape buffer on the south. We understand that there's a preliminary platform residential development that's been filed for the south, and I met with the owner and developer of that yesterday and talked with them about it. They're okay with our application and have acid. We provide a site-proof fence. They're okay with no 15-foot landscape buffer. TE3 also is for a 50-foot building setback on the east and south. We've provided for a 40-foot building setback on the east, on the south. Like I said, met with the owner of that property, and he's okay with no setback there as long as we put in the, the site-proof fencing. And then, as far as, we'd ask to amend that then to just the 40-foot on the east, so from 50 to 40, because we've got a creek that passes through the property. We're doing our best to keep the building away from it, and the parking away from that to provide some extra open space around the creek. And so 40-foot would allow us to fit that and still maintain over 100 feet of open space around that creek. That being said, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
This is a little bit confusing application to me. On the one hand, I don't think anybody's got a problem with the use, but there are these comments in the code, in the staff report about the, about the stream and about, you know, needing to address those. There are also comments about mitigation that is anticipated to be necessary. There's a question under operational impact whether lighting and announcing would be anticipated as part of the, you know, outdoor sporting activities, I assume. And the flat statement that it may not be possible to mitigate the impact to the areas on the east and south, I can't quite imagine what would possess somebody to suggest that you don't need to do what we're suggesting that you do with respect to the east and the south. But even if that person did indicate he was okay with it, I'm not. So, I think that the, we have not required a specific plan, even though it states elsewhere in the staff report that one ought to be required. I think that the four TEs that are listed here are minimal and minimum in terms of approval, from my point of view.
Um, I had, do you own, does Southwest Covenant own the property across the, that's on the site? Its existing site back to the south, Jason? I guess not. I mean, I assume that it didn't.
So, there's two entities here. There's the church and then the school. So the school owns the property that we're, we're looking to put the high school on. Now, the church does have, it's kind of an odd-shaped track on the west, but it doesn't, it has kind of a point to it. It doesn't, they don't own all of the property to the south. So if you go a little bit south of the oval that's up there, they own a little ways down, and then they don't own further south of there except on the east side.
So, that's the church, you're saying?
Correct.
So, but you have a school on the, I guess, the west side. I mean, if I look at the subject tract, to the west, there's an existing building, which I assume is the church and school, right?
Correct.
Right?
So, obviously, they, they work together on this.
Sure.
I believe that they've got a lease agreement for the elementary school that's on the church's property.
Okay, and then they own to the south down to this, I see a little oval there, and then they own to the south down. I'm just curious why you didn't put the high school over there? Because at that point, it's away from all the residential, and you don't have some of the concerns the Commissioner powers. I mean, I understand the business decision, and I just was curious, so.
Okay, fine. I've got an exhibit shows the survey of the church property.
May not be in your business plan. You may have plans for future expansion of the church. May have all kinds of different reasons, but-
So, I don't know if you can see this. This shows a little bit of the church property's boundary. So there's the oval that's on the boundary, and they do have some of this property to the south. Obviously, we've got the creek running through there, and there are some elevation changes, but I know that the intent and purchase of this piece of property was for the high school, and then that's why it's owned by the school and not by the church.
So, okay, well, you've made that decision, and I've made my point. So the question I've got is, what are you going to do? Is this like, I'll use crossings as an example, right? Crossing school built a new, just recently built a new athletic field, football field, and the school's expanding, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They don't have the same considerations that I see in this application because they're surrounded by, there's no residential out there by them. They can pretty much do what they want, and they don't interfere with anybody's use. But in this case, there's significant residential development that's around this area, and will probably continue to come around this area. Now, I've got a concern about putting, is it going to be a lighted football field?
That would be the intent, that it would be a lighted full service.
So they play games, soccer games, football games at night, et cetera, that would be hard up against this residential area, right?
So they have a football team, they have a junior high and a high school football team, so you'd be looking at 10 games, 10 home games per year, five for-
Five away.
Five for, for high school. So, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind the size of this school. I mean, they're graduating class. They're hoping to get to, you know, about 40 students. So, you know, we're nowhere on the, the scale of, say, Yukon is just down the street.
Sure.
Graduate to 400, 600, whatever.
But you've got lights.
Yeah.
You've got a stadium. You're going to have some bleeds. I don't know what you're going to build for, I'm assuming we're building this for future growth, too.
Correct.
You can anticipate that.
Um, and that's where we think, too, I mean, keeping it in perspective of the size. I mean, we would look at with future growth, probably having somewhere, stadium seats 600 to 800, whereas like Yukon Football Stadium, that's a, I mean, it's like, it's about a half mile to the west of here. I mean, seats 6,000. We can agree to meeting the city's requirements on lighting, and in fact, I've, we've done some research into lighting that can meet the city's requirements for spillover. I can pass out some examples of what that can possibly look like. And using LED lighting with some special directional hoods is pretty amazing, the amount of spillover and light that they can cut down. And so obviously, we're, we're, you know, we understand the residential neighborhood to the west and want to be good neighbors. And so we're trying to work and, well, we've tried to lay this thing out in a way to provide as much of a buffer along there. That's why we're agreeing to the, the 40-foot landscape buffer.
But then you've got, because of the topographical area, you've got the creek that prohibits you from moving your field closer to the west.
This kind, this kind of reminds me of where I went to high school, Putnam City North, back behind the school.
Yeah.
They have the athletic field, the baseball field, the soccer fields, and all that stuff. And you've got, what is it? It's that neighborhood right there, Warwick.
Warwick's back there.
Backs up to all that. Very similar to this.
Yeah, but do they have lights at Putnam North?
Well, they do on the baseball field.
On the baseball field?
Uh huh.
I couldn't remember. I wondered about that.
The, the point is, and here we are at the beginning, we have the opportunity to design it in a way that would minimize that impact. And it seems to me, as I said before, that the technical evaluations are kind of a minimal level of that.
Well, that's right, because it didn't mention any of these operational concerns that were somewhat in the staff report, which I somewhat expected to see some of those that would say, you know, you should address some of these operational issues, lighting, hours of operation potentially, et cetera. I'm not trying to over-engineer this thing, but I know that it gets to be a problem when it's up against residential.
Yeah, so I'm not quite familiar with the area over in Yukon, but is there a distinction between the Yukon High School timing of when it was built versus the surrounding residential versus when the residential developed around this school?
That residential to the east of this school's fairly, fairly recent. Two or three years.
Okay.
Was when that addition was put online. So, you know, the school's owned the property for quite some time. Obviously, we're here to rezone it today, so the zoning wasn't in place. But, you know, like I said, we've incorporated in the PUD some buffers, trying to do our best over there. And, you know, I think that we could incorporate some, some lighting as like the example that I've, I've provided to help prevent some of those problems. As far as PA system, I know Oklahoma City has a noise ordinance, and I'm by far not an expert on that. But we will meet those, and we can meet the noise ordinance. One, some options that we would probably agreeable to would be to make sure that any announcer speakers are faced to the west and don't face directly into the residential neighborhood.
So the neighbors, the neighbors are aware of your plans, right?
Well, they received a notice. Now, we haven't had any communication with the neighbors at this point, so.
You haven't had any neighborhood meetings, or?
None.
Just, I don't know, does Yukon receive the same notices that Oklahoma City does?
Our, our notice.
Right, that we send out for these meetings?
It's my understanding that they receive notice, too.
I think the, the residential that's to the east is basically planted-
It's not specific by a city, though, right? Just, just 300-foot radius.
Janice, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do.
Did we? Okay.
I was just curious.
We do.
I'm not trying to rush things along.
I have Andrew Lewis who'd signed up to speak, who want to come contribute to the discussion. Give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Andrew Lewis. I live in 2209 Marjory Lane in the Mar-a-Lago neighborhood. I have huge concerns about this rezoning, concerns about the devaluation of property. It's a decently higher-end neighborhood. I'm fearful of the impact that having a school this close to it would, would have.
So your property backs up to this site?
Yes, I'm the third house from the bottom, from the south. So I'd be right, right next to the football field, it appears. And the previous speaker suggested getting even closer than the preferred 50-foot, so that's 40-foot from the back of my fence. I can assure you, I'm not going to be pleased with that. I also have concerns about the increased traffic flow. There's already an increased amount of traffic, when parents come to pick up their students, they park along the side of 23rd Street, which isn't designated parking at all. So, once you get to high school, you're gonna have more, more traffic there, so I have huge concerns with that. I'm also concerned that there hasn't been any discussion with the neighborhood. I'm glad that got brought up. We've been, I just heard through the grapevine, I have some friends that do go to that school, but I, I'm concerned that there's lack of engagement. So, if, if they aren't gonna be good neighbors, if they get this rezoned, I'm nervous about what it's actually gonna look like.
Did you not receive notice?
I got the notice for this hearing, and that's why I'm here today.
Okay, okay.
Have you talked to any, it looks like there's, this neighborhood is a new neighborhood where you live.
Yes.
It's under construction.
Yep.
And not fully developed.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
So, there's one, I see, is it 1, 2, 3, 4 houses here on Marjory? But I, and I'm looking at this diagram.
I, I'm not sure how accurate this...
There's...
That may be old.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I think 7 or 8 that are on Marjory Lane currently. There's only one vacant lot.
Ah, so Marjory Lane is a little bit more developed than what our...
Yes.
...show's.
I've, I've had regular conversations with my neighbors, one of them was supposed to be here, he's not. He's the one that lives in the southmost lot, the one that lives in between us, the second to most southmost lot, we've had conversations, but we all have the same concerns.
Well, that suggests to me that there might be some benefit in a neighborhood meeting, then, between the church and the residents nearby, to see if you can pose the questions you have, and they can give you some answers, see if we can get a little closer. What do you think about that?
Excellent idea.
We'd be fine with taking a continuous to meet with the neighbors.
Well, two weeks give you enough time to do that?
I think so. That'll work.
Do you want a...
You might also, I, I think, I agree with Janice about some of the hours of operation, lighting concerns, speaker concerns, you know, I'd like to see those in the, in our report, kind of fleshed out a little bit more, so that we got a, a little better sense for these. Look, I'm, you know, I'm, I'd, I'd be sensitive if, if a, if a stadium was moving in next door, and I'd want to kind of have a little more color as to exactly what's going on.
And, just so I get this out before next time.
Sure.
My question would be on, on the necessity to strike the two TEs that were discussed. It seems that, it seems that if it, unless it's the dimensions of the, the field that are necessitating that, then it's the dimensions of the building. And to me, if it's the dimensions of the building that are necessitating, you know, the footprint, I know you guys are just trying to stay away from the, the stream, then the building just needs to be redesigned. You guys need to, need to massage the footprint to, to stay out of the setbacks.
Setback.
And it's that simple. And to me, that's, that's a, a failure from the architect, if not.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's in both directions where, where this side becomes a little bit tight. It's the east-west and north-south with a field, and so, to get the square footage they need, obviously, we've got, but we'll take a look at it and see what we can come up with.
I see a lot of open space in between the field and the building. I, I understand, you know, they might be keeping that for a reason, but I, I would just reconsider maybe what's going on inside those walls.
Sure, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at it and see what we can come up with.
I assume, based on Mr. Lewis's comments, that you'll hear from the neighbors about the traffic, I definitely will want to hear something about your traffic circulation plan for this property, how that's gonna work, and how that's gonna keep...
And, and just to speak quickly, to, and we'll, we'll talk with them more about it. I mean, I think it should lessen some of the traffic impacts, because we're gonna have some additional built-in drives in connection to the school over there, so it's gonna provide more onsite queuing, queuing space in those, to lessen some of the parking or backup onto 23rd Street. So, I think that, that that should be a, a positive thing that the neighbors will see by development of this school.
What ward are we in here?
If I may add one thing, too, before they come back, when you have those meetings, I don't know how appropriate it is or how you get them there, but the residential developer that's neighboring, if they can be involved in it, while I appreciate your comments, my understanding that the developer, at least, has been fully aware, the residential developer's been fully aware of these plans, so I don't know what you all, you know, what the homeowners have been told, but I'd like the developer next door to be involved. And then with respect to...
Make that happen.
All that open space that would look like it appears over there, it's my understanding that maybe the church and the school are not all one.
That's correct.
And so, there may be some limitations on what you can do, and that may be your own opportunity that you've been planning on for some time. Maybe for more discussion next time, but think about that.
Continuance to February 14th, is that the date?
Two weeks, you think?
Two weeks is fine.
Yes, I think that'll be fine.
Yes, that's the date. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to continue item 10 of February the 14th. Would you cast your votes, please?
You got my number.
Mr. Lewis, would you make sure that he has your name and address and a way to contact you directly? And staff will help us put together a meeting, I'm sure. So, you, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep on this part, you know. That brings us to the conclusion of our items to be heard, I believe. Item number 11 has been continued. So, I see a few people that are still here, let's go through the list. Additional items, communications reports, planning commission committees, no, planning commission members. We have training Friday. I, I hate to say this out loud, I may be late to training on Friday. It's also the date of a Capitol Medical Planning Commission meeting that I'm kind of thinking I need to go to, so, but I won't be very late.
Tomorrow, right?
You mean that, that meeting that starts at 7:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
Put over it, Mike.
We'll see you there, Mike.
Get up early, get your cup of coffee, go slipper off.
Come on, again.
And planning department.
We'll see all of you in the morning.
Developmental Service Department, and Municipal Counselor's Office. No, 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 citizens be heard, got rid of all them. Other business, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn, all in favor say aye.